So a video of you guys, and we have it so that they can see you because we were going to do an demonstration. So they could see you. We can put that up when you guys are talking, or we can not put that up. Dan, have you just your PowerPoint up there until you guys are done with your PowerPoint, and then take me down?
Yeah, I'll only do that.
So Danica, PowerPoint only until they're completely done with everything, and then for question and answer.
Yep. Some good defensive prosecutors. I'm super nervous.
I still think the demo would have been awesome.
I voted yes, too.
I voted Danica could be the person.
Uh, yeah.
I don't think she voted yes to that.
Good evening, everybody. It is now 5:30. This is our city council study session for June 29, 2020. And once again, for the governor's emergency proclamation, the City of Auburn's Resolution Number 5533, the City of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings at this time. So once again, we are conducting this study session virtually and telephonically. Sean, do you please call the roll?
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J-Rod.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Thank you, everybody. The item on the agenda this evening is a presentation from our police department. And also, I would ask that, this is a pretty, pretty long presentation from what we gathered from the slides we received. I'd like to ask that we hold our questions until the chief has completed with his presentation, and then we can ask questions at the end, and try and get the school to look more in a smoother fashion, and give the police the opportunity to do what they need to do to give us this presentation. So with that, I will turn this over to Chief O'Neil.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Here tonight with Assistant Chief Mark Halyer, Sergeant James Frith, and Commander Christian Adams. We're here tonight to do a presentation based on the current events that are occurring across the nation right now. There's a lot of question about police tactics specifically related to use of force, and I thought it'd be beneficial for our council and mayor to receive a presentation about the vascular neck restraint that we use, the eight that can't wait, and then the difference between a use-of-force continuum and a use-of-force policy that we have. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Frith, who's going to talk about vascular neck restraint.
It's a PowerPoint. Good evening, Mayor and council. Sergeant James Frith, and I'm here to give a quick presentation on the vascular neck restraint, and answer any questions that you may have. So this presentation was put together by Bob Bragg, who is a force instructor, and had, lead instructor at the CJTC a while back, and I took this and, with his permission, and made it more specific to Auburn. So I just wanted to give him credit right away. The vascular neck restraint, you know, is control the fight without might, no blood, no bruises, no broken bones, just compliance. And what we're trying to say here is that by using neck restraints, we're able to reduce the amount of force we use by using kicks, strikes, impact weapons, batons, and things like that. We're able to take somebody and just put them to sleep for approximately 10 to 20 seconds. They wake up, they're in handcuffs, and there's no medical, typically, there's no medical issues. Instead of having to actually fight the person where it's going to take two or three officers, and the violator, the person being arrested is probably going to be injured, and there's a high potential for officers to be injured also. So, go ahead. So the vascular neck restraint is designed to maximize control of violators and minimize injury of both officer and the violator. It works by restricting the flow to and from the brain through the carotid arteries. The arteries take blood away from the heart, and the veins return them back to the heart. And you have veins on both sides of your neck, and all we do when we use a vascular neck restraint is we compress those arteries. It doesn't, we don't compress them all the way, so it doesn't stop all blood flowing, but just enough to make the person go to sleep. Basically, when agencies use the vascular neck restraints, they typically show a reduction in the use-of-force complaints and reduction in officer injuries. It's important to understand that a vascular neck restraint is not a choke. Chokes restrict the airway, which is from the front, the esophagus, and the trachea, but the, because of the potential, or because of the position of the vascular neck restraint, and then we use the side, and there's a lot of muscles that protect the carotid arteries and the mechanisms of the neck, that the risk for injury is greatly decreased. On a choke, when you're going from the front, the risk of injury is increased. Thank you. So, a little bit of the research, and Doctors Rosen, Cabot, and Anderson wrote a paper called the acute arrest of cerebral circulation in man. Go ahead. And basically, they took 137 subjects, 126 apparently normal male volunteers from 17 to 31 years of age, and 11 schizophrenics. They repeated these tests in 85 of the subjects, and also performed tests in volunteers on themselves and law enforcement officers and other investigators. What they found was, and how they did the test was they used a pressure cuff, and they basically compressed the neck and compressed those carotid arteries, and then they took measurements. So, you can go ahead. So basically, they took, they had the carotid, they had the neck compressed for up to 100 seconds, and they didn't, what they didn't find is any long-term medical effects, or any negative effects at the time. In fact, as soon as they released the pressure cuff, everybody responded and had recovery as normal. And so, and it's important to say that, you know, understand that this thing was compressed for 100 seconds. When we do it, we're doing it for less than 30 seconds. We're doing it typically about 10 to 15 seconds before the violator goes unconscious. If we're using it and they're not unconscious within 15 to 20 seconds, we're moving on to some other type of technique. So they went all the way up to 100 seconds. Go ahead. So, you know, the big question that we're seeing today is are vascular neck restraints deadly force? Because what we're seeing in the media is, we're talking about chokeholds and deadly force, and officers around the nation are using them, and people are dying. But it's important for us to understand that there's a difference between a stranglehold and a vascular neck restraint. And we need to differentiate the two. Go ahead. On a stranglehold, it uses direct mechanical compression over the interior structures of the neck, which is the front, and you can take, and you can push with your own hand right at your trachea and your esophagus, and you're going to feel that it's really tender, and it doesn't take a lot of pressure. And so by compressing the trachea, you're restricting the person's ability to breathe, and that rate can result in asphyxiation, which is deadly force. And on top of that, you're creating, you're damaging the structures in the front of the neck, which are very fragile. When we use a vascular neck restraint, we're doing a bilateral compression of the carotid arteries and the jugular veins at the sides of the neck, and it diminishes cerebral circulation, basically makes the person go to sleep. The reduction in the blood flow reduces the violator's ability to resist and can lead to unconsciousness. And it doesn't always lead to unconsciousness because we find that a lot of people give up once they start feeling a little bit like they're going to go to sleep, and most people give up. And it's important for, you can go ahead and switch it. Oh, I'm sorry. Good. So, it's important for people to understand that, you know, for officers, administrators, and the media, understand that there's no significant front pressure applied to the neck when we use vascular neck restraints. It's all from the side, and that's where the muscles are, and you can press on your own neck and feel that there's hardly, you won't feel any real pressure or pain on the side of your neck as opposed to the front. And it's important also to note that this move has been used in the ultimate fighter competitions, martial arts, and the judo community for years and years without any significant injuries. And so, go ahead. Do vascular neck restraints incur more liability than other force options? Vascular neck restraints actually offer an alternative to using lethal force, repeated use of electronic weapons which are tasers, impact weapons which are sticks and batons, OC spray which is your pepper spray, and strikes and kicks, and also excessive body compression during officer swarms, which is when three or four of us get on top of the subject to control them. And the Canadian Royal Mounted Police actually did a study and found that along with OC pepper spray, vascular neck restraints are one of the safest moves for officers and the violators. Because anytime we use lethal force, or a taser, or impact weapon, we're having to do blunt trauma, usually, or especially with impact weapons, we're doing blunt trauma damage to whatever part of the body that we strike. And with the neck restraints, the person just goes to sleep, wakes up, and they're in handcuffs. So, basically, where we use vascular neck restraints is, we apply them to individuals who demonstrate a high tolerance for pain under the influence of drugs, and are they excited, agitated, or in a psychotic state, and control can be established. And so where we see a lot of problems across the nation is excited delirium, and that's where violators are under the influence of drugs and alcohol, and maybe like, think of something like PCP where they're amped up and they're just have a superhuman strength, and we can't control them. And so the only way for law enforcement to get them under control is to, if we don't have the vascular neck restraint, is we're going to have to use sticks, and we're basically going to have to beat them until they're in compliance. But if we can get the neck restraint on them, we just take them right to sleep. So, and again, repeating, by using the, having this as a force option, we reduce officer injuries, we reduce injuries to the suspects, and we reduce potential in custody deaths, especially with excited delirium. Because of excited delirium, what I was just talking about with the drugs and alcohol, is that fight with people that are having excited delirium, those fights can be long and violent, and they basically, the violator basically fights himself to death. And when we can just take them unconscious, it's over, just like that. You know, as with any use-of-force incident, the type of force, quantum of force, and the manner which the force is applied is always going to be subject to legal guidelines and public scrutiny. And so we just have to make sure that we use the vascular neck restraint in a reasonable manner, and that we follow the state law, case law, and our department policy. So, going along with that, the legal opinions, so the neck restraints, they came under scrutiny in the 80s due to some high-profile cases, but they're relatively few in relation to the number of applications of the vascular neck restraints, and they had a disproportionate impact on police departments authorizing the use of neck restraints to control individuals. And a lot of times, it was because the neck restraints were being used improperly. And so, the legal opinions, the US Supreme Court has not offered an opinion on vascular neck restraints as v. deadly force. The landmark case, which we'll talk about a little bit later, is Graham versus Connor, which is a standard of objective reasonableness. And right now, the courts ruled that neck restraints are an intermediate use of force, and they are a reasonable force option. And so, there's nothing that says that they're deadly force. A lot of the chokeholds that were litigated, and that there's, that there's been litigation or lawsuits for, or excessive force, was, a lot of times, it wasn't a matter of the chokehold or the neck restraint, it was a matter that any force was used was going to be unlawful in that situation, that, basically, the police should not have used force, period. Or the reason that they were using the force was not a good legal reason. And then, again, the chokeholds, most of the time, is because they're used improperly. And then, on this, while there is always a risk anytime we use force, the research shows that the vast majority of neck restraints do not result in death. And Dr. Hoskins, who writes, who wrote, "There's a possibility of fatal outcome of vascular neck restraints. The number of investigations is testament to the relatively, relative in frequency of fatal outcomes." And Dr. Ray, who is a critic of the hold, admits that in view of the alleged frequency of their use, there have been remarkably few reported deaths. Judo communities use this hold for over 133 years in the sport, and the majority of studies reviewed, there's been no deteriorious effects from using the hold. Forensic pathologists Vincent and Domenico Di Maio wrote that carotid sleeper holds are safe if properly used. In 2005, Dr. Gary Vilk wrote that carotid sleeper hold is an appropriate form of restraint and use of fourth method in law enforcement's continuum. And then, again, I referenced it earlier, the Canadian Police Research Center did a study on the neck restraints, and it said that while no methodology is completely risk-free, there is no medical reason to routinely expect grievous bodily harm or death following a correct application of the vascular neck restraint. So while there have been some deaths associated with use of force and VNRs, it's rare that the deaths are caused by the vascular neck restraint. Again, we know that nothing's 100%, and the vascular neck restraints have a pretty good record of success and safety, and most legal decisions and medical information support that it's less than deadly force levels. And again, this was, this slide is me giving credit to Rob, Bob Bragg, from the CJTC. So I'll go over our policy, the Auburn Police Department's policy on lateral vascular neck restraints, the flexipole policy 300.3.4. And our policy states that it may be effective in restraining a violent or combative individual, but the vascular neck restraint is subjected to the following. The officer shall have successfully completed department-approved training in the use and application of the vascular neck restraint. So we require our officers to, they have to take a written test, and they have to go through a course of, we give them, we provide them instruction, and then they have to demonstrate a series of techniques and moves before they're certified, and they have to recertify every year, and they're trained a minimum number of hours throughout the year to continue to use the vascular neck restraint. So the vascular neck restraint may be used in circumstances perceived by the officer at the time that indicate that such application reasonably appears necessary to control a person in the following circumstances. Number one, the person is violent or physically resisting. The person by words or actions has demonstrated an intention to be violent and reasonably appears to have potential to harm officers or others. And the vascular neck restraint should be avoided unless the totality of circumstances indicates that other available options reasonably appear effective. So, basically, what that's saying is we don't go right to the vascular neck restraint, we're going to try to de-escalate first, and if it appears that the subject that we're trying to arrest or control is going to be violent towards us or someone else, then we can move to using the vascular neck restraint. We always weigh whether the, you know, the use of the control hold is going to outweigh the risk of applying, you know, the person getting away. We're not allowed to use it on females who are known to be pregnant, elderly, obvious juveniles, and individuals who appear to have Down syndrome, or who appear to have obvious neck deformities, malformations, or visible neck injuries. If we do use a vascular neck restraint and we render them unconscious, we do require that the person be seen by medical personnel, and they are monitored by the medical personnel. Once the medical personnel clear them, and we take them to jail, we have to provide, we have to notify the jail staff receiving the individual that the person was rendered unconscious by a VNR vascular neck restraint. And then they're monitored for a certain amount of time by the jail. In addition, the officer, whenever an officer uses a vascular neck restraint, they have to notify the sergeant or on-duty supervisor that they use that neck restraint so that it can be investigated. The use of the neck restraint can be investigated and documented. And that's really the end of the presentation for vascular neck restraint.
Yes, and we want to take questions now to Sergeant Frith and Commander Adams before we move on to Eight Can't Wait. I also want to point out that both Sergeant Frith and Commander Adams are longtime members of our Defensive Tactics instructor staff. Sergeant Frith has over 22 years' experience with the Auburn Police Department, and I believe he's our longest-tenured Defensive Tactics instructor. Both he and Commander Adams are certified and have been trained by the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission.
Sterns. Sterns. Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Go ahead, Councilmember Sterns.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation to us on the vascular neck restraints. So, since the murder of George Floyd, there have been a wave of cities that have reevaluated and rebought their use of neck restraints. And there've just been a significant number of cities that have decided that they should ban vascular neck restraints. For instance, I have a list here, I could probably share with you, but, you know, in the last month, you've got Houston, Denver, Washington DC, Phoenix, Minneapolis, Raleigh, North Carolina, Tacoma, Federal Way, Miami-Dade, Belize, San Diego, and then you have the states of California, and Connecticut, and New York, as well as our neighbors of North Seattle. So, it seems like, you know, there's just a wave of cities that are really looking at this, and, you know, they're deciding that it's just too risky. And I'd also point out that, you know, banning vascular neck restraints does lead to a lower level of police killing. The Use of Force Project, their research shows that it reduces police violence by 22%. And just also, as we, you know, launch into the next presentation on Eight Can't Wait, Eight Can't Wait specifically calls for a ban on the use of vascular neck restraint. So, you know, I just think it's really, you know, it's really important, and it's timely for our city to review whether we should ban those, too. You know, and we can do that whether, you know, using a community commission, a task force, a council review, however we do that, but that's just, it's my view, that we should really reevaluate vascular neck restraints. So, anyway, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. I have a quick comment, and then a question myself.
Deputy Mayor.
First comment's quick.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm sorry. Yes?
Will you allow our officers to respond to Councilmember Sterns' comments? Because I think there were some areas that might not have been accurate.
My only statement is that the Eight Can't Wait does not ban VNR. It is against chokeholds, which we discussed earlier, was the front of the neck, and we discussed that the VNR, vascular neck restraint, is on the side of the neck, which is completely different than a chokehold.
And Chief, did you want to talk about federal?
Can I, can I, I want to raise my hand, sorry.
Let us, let us finish the response if we can, and then...
Okay. All right.
You can't.
Barely.
Any other questions?
Kind of can, kind of cannot. It's very muffled.
Yeah, he is muffled.
We're having troubles with our officers in here being able to hear council comments and questions as well. So if you'll give us a moment for some technical changes, perhaps?
Jason. So, Councilmember Sterns, can you just say a couple things so I can see if the officers can hear you?
Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
Is that any better?
Lot better. Lot better. That's better.
Okay, that is, that is better. Thank you. So, Chief, did you want to go ahead and respond?
Sure. Councilmember Sterns, I appreciate your comments, and as the chief of police, this is something that I have not taken lightly, and I've had several conversations with the command staff and our Defensive Tactics instructors about how we should proceed with the use of the vascular neck restraint. We've also had several conversations as valley chiefs with both Kent and Federal Way, and at this time, we have made a decision in the region not to ban or move away from the use of a vascular neck restraint for the sole purpose that we've been using it since 2004, and we have not had any complaints that I'm aware of from citizens who have been subjected to a vascular neck restraint during the time that they were resisting arrest or using force against our officers. We have not had any documented injuries. The use of it significantly reduces the amount of force that officers need to use, which minimizes injury to suspects and injury to officers. Across the nation, there are a lot of groups out there that classify banning chokeholds and strangleholds. We've always had chokeholds as deadly force at the Auburn Police Department. The IACP does not classify a vascular neck restraint as a chokehold or a stranglehold. In the recent ruling made by the President of the United States, he did not classify a vascular neck restraint as a use of deadly force or a chokehold. And so based on those terms and conditions, we feel it's important to leave that as an option for our officers, because it does make use-of-force situations a lot safer for the citizens and our officers, and we will essentially wait until there's a ruling at the state level, or until we decide regionally that it's not an appropriate or effective use of force. The article, as it relates to Federal Way PD, they have changed their policy, and this was done a while ago, where they no longer use it as a control hold. The vascular neck restraint can be used as just a control hold without it being more, more offensive.
Thank you very, very much for your response. You know, I think it's, you know, they're, you know, appreciate your viewpoint. I do want to point out that, and I'm going to read two things directly from the Campaign Zero website, which you are familiar with, is the Eight Can't Wait. So, I'm under the Eight Can't Wait, under the Policy Solutions for Join Campaign Zero, Policy Solution, Ban Chokeholds, Strangleholds, i.e. Carotid Restraints, Hog-Tying and Transporting People Face Down in a Vehicle. And then, under the Campaign Zero website directly, it says Neck Holds Prohibited. Law enforcement officers shall not use chokeholds, strangleholds, lateral vascular neck restraints, carotid restraints, chest compressions, or any other tactics that restrict oxygen or blood flow to the head or neck. And those are directly from the Campaign Zero website. I just wanted to correct that. Thank you.
Councilmember Trump Manuel has a question?
Councilmember Trump Bagel.
Yes, hello. This is going to Chief O'Neil. They were reading off on the vascular neck restriction, and you have four individuals that are not used on, and that's a pregnant woman, elderly, juvenile, and somebody with Down syndrome. Do you use that type tactic on smaller women and use the same force as if you would a man?
Well, our use-of-force policy dictates that we'll use the amount of force necessary to affect the lawful purpose intended, and it's based on a reasonableness scale based on the amount of resistance that is being provided by the defendant in that situation. And Sergeant Frith is going to talk more in our third presentation tonight about our response to resistance policy, and how we determine the level of force that's appropriate based on the resistance that we're receiving at the time.
Okay, then I'll hold up my question till I hear that, on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Chief, I got a question, and first of all, a comment. I've actually read some of the forensic pathology documents that Vincent D'Amico Di Maio wrote over the years, and made reasonably, it is my mother's maiden name was Di Maio, and they are actually distant relatives. So, more of a curiosity thing than anything else, but I do like what they have to say about, you know, the... But I do like what they have to say about, you know, the term sleeper hold and their conclusions on some of the effects of that. My question is that, and looking to follow up on Councilmember Trump Manuel, so individuals with obvious malformations or other types of deformities, and those who are resisting, and I understand this only takes a few seconds to apply the VNR, how do you identify quickly those folks that may have some malformations? And how do you not have a VNR slip into a chokehold when somebody's resisting even though it only takes a few seconds?
So a lot of times, it's unusual that we show up in a situation and immediately have to go to a use of force like a VNR. So during that time, we have the opportunity, well, first of all, to deescalate the situation, communicate with the individual and do an assessment of where they're at or who we're dealing with and if they may have one of those conditions that are addressed in our policy where VNR would not be appropriate. And then, I can answer this, but Sergeant Frith or Commander Adams would be the experts in it. But it is, when you apply the VNR correctly and you're trained on its appropriate use, there's what's called a neck brace principle that prevents you from slipping into a chokehold. It's, that would occur, I would think, when somebody is not properly trained or recertified in the process. We certify every year in it. We have defensive tactics that we're taught four times a year, and VNR is incorporated into each of those training sessions. And then at the end of the year, we do mock scene testing where there's also an emphasis placed on VNR along with deescalation and communication. So our officers get a lot of training in its use to ensure that we are using it safely. Sergeant Frith or Commander Adams, did you have anything further that you could add about how we train so that it doesn't easily slip into a chokehold?
When we train, we do multiple repetitions of the VNR. And when we train as staff, we train with partners that teach you and help correct you to make sure you have the right placement. When you encircle the neck with your arm, you do not apply pressure until you have the neck brace principle. I have used it, so as Sergeant Frith, and you do not apply pressure until you are correctly in there. You know what it feels like because we have done hundreds, if not thousands, of reps before ever rendering someone unconscious. We drill it on, like I said, all four of our defensive tactics. Training days, we work on that technique. We have to recertify every three years through the CJTC to continue to teach it. And when it is taught, it is a very slow process to make sure we get correct repetitions and not incorrect ones so that when we do use it in the heat of the moment, our muscle memory will kick in and we will do it correctly.
Great, thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions for the officers on this subject?
Councilmember Jay Raj has a question?
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Councilmember Jay Raj, you're muted.
Before he asks his question, can I add one more thing?
Yeah, please.
Also, when we do our training, we coach each other through it to make sure it's done properly. And on the street, we coach each other as well. I, from personal experience, did not have, I could not get into the proper position, and another officer was able to help me get there and we used it correctly and the person was uninjured. He woke up, he apologized for his behavior, and we, no one was injured and everyone was happy.
Okay, officers, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. But I do have a few questions that I want to ask. First of all, I know you mentioned muscle memory kicks in and your training kicks in. But there is going to be times where all that's going to be thrown out of the door, a window. And I am very concerned about the fact that even a new officer might get involved with a situation like that and may cause harm. So with that in mind, my biggest question is, is how critical is it for you guys to use that VNR?
How critical is it for you to use VNR?
It's very important. I'm not a very large man, five foot nine, about 170 pounds. My applications of VNR have been on everyone who has been 100 pounds or more, bigger than me. Without the VNR, I'd have to use strikes, knees, elbows, and punches to put that person in the handcuffs, to make sure I went home alive and well and safe to my family. Being able to encircle the neck, using the training and coaching that I have received at the Auburn Police Department, I have been able to successfully apply a VNR correctly and render the person unconscious, place them in the handcuffs, and then put them into the recovery position to make sure they were safe. And then I, per our policy, I summon aid and notified my supervisor.
Then the other question I have is, I feel very uncomfortable of the fact that your arm goes around the front of the neck. So is there a way that you can do it without going around the neck?
No, unfortunately, no. And to be honest, most of the times when you encircle the neck, most people comply. Because as you're encircling the neck, you are still asking for compliance from the subject, asking for hands, put your hands behind your back, stop resisting. And most times, when you put the arm around the neck, the compliance happens. You do not apply pressure through the VNR to even attempt to render the person unconscious unless they continue to resist and fight your lawful commands.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to also add to that. We, so when we train the vascular neck restraint, what we spend most of our time training is the proper placement of the arm around the neck. And we can demonstrate that, if you want to demonstrate it.
That would be good.
And so we spend, what is called, is called the head-neck brace principle. And the whole, can you hear me?
We can, but if you want to stand up front to demonstrate?
Oh, okay. I'm going to stay seated, it'll be easier.
He's taller than me.
And so what we, this is majority of what we practice, is making sure that when our arm, the arm that goes around the neck is called the encircling arm. And that we position the encircling arm around the neck in a way that's safe and we prevent the front of the neck from being compressed at all. And if it, we can feel it, and if it's being compressed, we readjust our positioning. And we practice it from several different positions. We practice getting into this move from on the ground, underneath, on top of the suspect. And so I kind of lost my train of thought there, but with the neck brace principle is primarily what we spend most of, the majority of our time doing, sir, is making sure that the neck is not compressing the front. And that's what you saw with, if you remember Eric Garner in New York, that was from the front, which is a bar choke, and that's deadly force.
Right, right.
And so we spend a lot of time, that's the majority of what we train. And so Commander Adams will demonstrate putting it on, circling my neck, and we'll kind of talk how we're doing this. And it's called the head-neck brace principle, and there's about five things, four or five things we do to ensure that we are not choking the person out from the front. And so I'll hold the microphone while he does it. So this is, his encircling arm is going to go around my neck. And so if you notice, now he's got me locked in, he has me locked in. And if you look at his elbow, his elbow is lined up with my chin. And he's done this hundreds, like I said, if not thousands of times. And so to be honest with you, right now, there is no pressure on the front of my neck whatsoever. I feel completely comfortable, almost like a child being hugged. But I am actually getting a little bit dizzy, just from the little bit of compression. He's not even compressing, but I'm already seeing a little bit of the stars and I could almost go unconscious right there. And where the pressure is being felt is up here on the upper level of my neck.
Turn sideways and we'll do it.
We'll turn sideways and we'll show it from this position. And so if you notice, he took his rear hand and he positioned my head, and it's right into the cradle of the neck. So I can barely, I can't really move around too much because he has my head locked in with his head and he has compression on both sides of my neck. And so the front of my neck is being protected by his elbow, by the V that he forms right here. So I could actually move forward and he can control me by pulling me back, or like this. I can move around and he's going to maintain this position on my neck the entire time. If he were to feel that my neck was to get twisted or get turned like this, this is a bar choke. If he were to come around like this, he would feel that. And when that happens, he would let go of the neck. And he'd either be able to reposition with another arm, his other arm, or his, or the encircling arm, or he would have to release the neck restraint altogether and go completely to a different move. And so what we do a lot of times if we're using this, there's two officers on scene. So if I'm the arrestee, the bad guy, and there's two officers, and I'm going to attack the officer just in front of me, Commander Adams puts his arm around my neck, locks me up, and the officer in front really doesn't have to do much, but he, that officer will actually coach Commander Adams on how to do it. So if Commander Adams is off a little bit right here, I don't know if you can see it, but his elbow is not lined up with my chin, the officer would actually coach Commander Adams, hey, move it to the front, move it to the, you know, to the left, to the right a little bit. And we actually coach each other in the street to make sure that we're doing it right. And as soon as we get off, like this, the other officer would say, hey, you're off his neck, let go, or he would feel it and let go of it also.
And Sergeant Frith, I would guess when you say thousands or hundreds, if not thousands of times, that includes the many, many, many times that you're doing this in training, not out on the street thousands of times?
Yeah, I would like to clarify, we have not used it thousands of times on the street, or I don't even think we've used it hundreds. We have used it quite a bit successfully. But this is mainly in training. And when we do all our defensive tactics training, we have, we have special days that are designed just to, just to train the vascular neck restraint. But even when we're not doing the vascular neck restraint, we make the officers practice putting this move on from different positions. We always come back and emphasize the vascular neck restraint in our training.
And if I can also add to that, we also do mock scenes where myself, Sergeant Frith, and other members of the defensive tactics staff put on little suits and we go through scenarios with the officers. And they get a more real-life application of applying a VNR. So we do have scenes where there's a use of force and they, if I'm wrestling, if I'm the bad guy, the officer's arresting me, Sergeant Frith will be over like a referee, correcting the officer and coaching him to make sure they're getting perfect and positive applications of the VNR, if that's the technique they use.
Councilmember Brown has a question?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that demonstration and the fact that you're not practicing it thousands of times on the street. Sure you wouldn't want that sort of combat in the street. But do you keep track of, it was told to us that during your report, that you're very careful about making sure people have medical attention and whatnot when you have to use this. But do you keep track of that application by officer? So would you know, for example, Commander Adams, how much you've used that by virtue of a record that is kept?
Yes, anytime we use force, like in the presentation, we have to notify this on-duty supervisor. And then once they are notified, they are, the officer is ordered to do a report of force in our program called Blue Team. And those are all documented. Successful or unsuccessful applications of VNR are all documented and kept there.
And if I might follow up with one more question? Are these use of force records, is there any sort of quantity, quantitative measurement that would trigger some review of an officer's techniques or ability to handle the job relative to the safety of the public and fellow officers?
Oh, there is an alert that will be triggered if an officer is using force more than his So we are notified, and once the alert happens, we review the uses of force and see if there's any coaching or training that could be done to help improve.
Sir, also, along with that alert, we have had alerts in the past where we've reviewed officers' use of force. And it's generally not going to be just because of a vascular neck restraint, but it would be any force that's used. So if an officer, if we see that an officer is using a significantly more types of force than other officers, we're going to look and we're going to kind of investigate whether this is a deescalation issue or maybe this is an active officer who is arresting more people than the other officers or responding to more calls. There's a lot of, there's a lot of different things that can impact how much force an officer uses. And so we do look into and investigate what those factors may be. And a lot of times, this will be on video, so we go back and review the videos. But every time an officer uses force, they're required to notify the sergeant on duty. And we come out and do basically a mini investigation, if you will, on the use of force to see if it, is it justified use of force, not just with vascular neck restraint, but with any use of force. And so reports are taken, photographs are, the suspect's photographed, we document injuries, medical attention that was offered or refused or given to the arrestee. And then those force reports are forwarded up through the chain of command and reviewed by, so if an officer used one, one of my officers uses one tomorrow, I will go out and do basically the initial investigation, document it, and then it will go, it will go up the chain of command through Commander Adams, all the way to the Chief of Police for review. So there's, there's a lot of eyes that actually look at these uses of force and to determine whether it's a good use of force or a bad use of force. And like, and like Commander Adams said, we have alerts in our system that will alert us that if an officer is using force basically more than their peers. And that, and that doesn't mean they're a bad officer or they're doing anything wrong, it's just it's something that we can look at and determine if there's other factors.
And Counsel, you'll remember that you received a use of force report, the annual use of force report, just a week or two ago? That provided you with all of the different uses of force. You probably still have that information from your packet or electronically that you can refer back to as well.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, Deputy, I'm sorry, Senator Clark, you're...
Councilmember Sterns.
Councilmember Sterns, please.
So a question is, on, you know, as the mayor just pointed out, you know, we did receive a report on the use of force types. In 2019, the vascular neck restraint was used 51 times, making it the third most, the third highest force use. And I was just wondering, why is it so high? I mean, why are we using the VNR 51 reported times compared to any of the other times of force? It just seems like it's pretty high for it to be the third highest used.
Sir, I think that the fact that we've used it 51 times last year is, is basically, it's showing that we are successfully training it and that we're, and our officers are comfortable using it. That 51 times that an officer used it could have been 51 times that we had to fight a suspect by kicking him, punching him, or using sticks on him. I think it's important to realize that when we're using the vascular neck restraint, we're using that instead of having to use other levels of force. And I hate to go back this far, but if you remember, you know, Rodney King, when the officers were beating him with a stick, had they had been able to get down on his back and actually just put him in the vascular neck restraint, that whole incident could have been over within seconds and it wouldn't have turned into the situation that it did. So the 51 times that we used a vascular neck restraint, it's important to realize that those aren't just 51 isolated incidents that no force would have been used, we would have used some kind of force 51 other times. And so out of those 51 times, we may have had to hit somebody with a stick, where they broke their arm, broke their, broke their legs, their hands, their fingers, those would have been incidents that could have been into hospital, that the city's going to have to pay for the medical care potentially, or there may be lawsuits on the officers. So I think the fact that we train our officers so well, that they're comfortable using it, and out of those 51 times, I can't recall once where we've had a complaint or any injuries due to the vascular neck restraint.
Okay, so I mean, it basically sounds like you think most police departments or all police departments should be using this more?
Sorry?
Do you think, you believe that most police departments should use this hold more?
Yes, sir, I wholeheartedly do. And that was, that's the stance of, was the stance of this Criminal Justice Training Commission. I say was because I don't currently know what, what their stance is. what, what their stance is with the political environment that we're in now. But it has been pushed, it's been pushed really hard by the Washington Criminal Justice Training Commission. They were, they were basically certifying recruits in the VNR after class, even for agencies that wouldn't allow the VNR. And so when the recruits up at the CJTC have to go to graduate, they have to do a use of force test, and they have to use different moves. And they have to, they have to encounter subjects in mock scenes with various levels of force. And so the agencies that have recruits that don't use the vascular neck restraint, their recruits had to go in and literally fight. And sometimes they had to fight for two and three minutes. And they were getting pretty beat up and they were worn out and tired. And the agencies like Auburn, who allowed the vascular neck restraint, our recruits were allowed to use the vascular neck restraint during the mock scenes. And our mock scenes, those recruits' mock scenes were over literally within seconds. Same thing on the street, you know. If we have to arrest somebody, we're going to arrest them. And if we have to use force, we have to use force. And so it's either, you know, if we have the opportunity to use the vascular neck restraint and they go to sleep in 20 seconds, or it could be two officers show up and now we have to fight, punch, kick, you know, use an impact weapon, tase the person. I mean, the potential for our injuries are greater, but the potential for the suspect's injuries are, are really increased when we have to use those tactics, instead of just simply putting our arm around their neck and taking them to sleep.
Councilmember Jay Rogge had the question?
I, I lowered my hand. John, thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other questions on this subject before we move on?
Okay, if there are no other questions on this topic before we move on to the next one, I do want to invite Mayor, if she's interested or counsel, next week, Tuesday or Wednesday, I could get you the exact date, but we're going to be teaching and certifying some of our new police officers in the use of VNR. And I invite all of you to come out just to observe if you want, or I'm sure Sergeant Frith and Commander Adams would be more happy to let you go through the class. And you can actually apply VNR to one of our police officers, and you can see how it is used and see it, you know, up close and firsthand. But I will send out an email tomorrow and confirm that date and time. And then if you want to give back to me, if you're interested in coming by, just so we can make sure we have enough room in the class, that'd be great.
Thank you, Chief, for that offer.
And that we don't have a corner.
If we have a corner.
And no corner.
And we don't have a corner, that's correct.
And of course, if it's okay with legal. We'll have to check with Dan Hyde tomorrow. We'll, we'll cover all corners, but at the end of the day, maybe one of you might be able to come. All right, if there's another questions, I can move on to the eight can't wait now.
Please do.
All right, so number one on the eight can't wait is ban chokeholds and strangleholds. I'm going to move on from this because I think we've covered this already. Number two is requiring de-escalation. The eight can't wait says that it requires officers to de-escalate situations where possible by communicating with subjects, maintaining distance, and otherwise eliminating the need for the use of force. De-escalation is covered in our policy manual in five different sections. It's covered under training, teaser in the use of force, crisis intervention incidents, emergent detentions and disputes. Each year, we conduct four sessions of defensive tactics that all commission employees are required to attend. There is an emphasis placed on de-escalation during each session. And at the end of the year, we measure the success of this training with mock scenes where officers are required to demonstrate crisis communications and de-escalation techniques. In addition to our defensive tactics, officers get two hours of crisis intervention training that's required through the state. The last two years, it has been an online course. This training focuses on crisis communications and de-escalation. Additionally, the state of Washington requires that 25% of all patrol officers that are working the street attend a 40-hour crisis intervention course. The Auburn Police Department exceeds this standard, and we have mandated that every commissioned officer attend the full 40-hour course. Officers also attend biospace policing training every other year. And with ethics and years in between, and additionally, all members of the Auburn Police Department are going to attend the 10-hour CJTC class related to implicit bias. Several of us have attended already, but then as a result of the pandemic, that class has been suspended and stopped. And on average, the Auburn Police Department employees get 17,000 hours of training each year. The next topic on the eight that can't wait is the requirement for a warning before shooting. It specifically says, requires officers to give a verbal warning in all situations before using deadly force. I've been with the Auburn Police Department just short of 21 years, and it has always been in our policy that we give a warning, not only before we use deadly force, but before we use any type of force, when feasible. And officers are required to advise of the action that will occur before it is used. So for example, stop resisting arrest or you'll be tased. The next one requires that we exhaust all alternatives before shooting. It specifically says require officers to exhaust all other alternatives, including non-force and less-lethal options prior to resorting to deadly force. Officer, our policies state, officers may use deadly force to protect him or herself or others from what he or she reasonably believes would be an imminent threat of death or serious bodily injury. Further, state law requires that no other reasonable alternative to the use of deadly force occurred at the time deadly force was used. The next one is a duty to intervene. Requires officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers and report these incidents immediately to a supervisor. This is another one that has been a policy of the Auburn Police Department for the 20 years that I can remember. Auburn Police Department policy states that officers are required to intervene and report any use of force. I can think of a few times where recently this has occurred, where officers perceived what they thought might have been an inappropriate use of force, and they were sure to bring that to a supervisor and report it. So not only do we have a policy for it, but we have officers that are aware of it and practice it. Ban shooting at moving vehicles is the next one. It specifically says that we should ban officers from shooting at moving vehicles in all cases, which is regarded as a particularly dangerous and ineffective tactic. While some departments may restrict shooting at vehicles to particular situations, these loopholes allow for police to continue killing in situations that are all too common. 62 people were killed by police last year in these situations. This must be categoric, this must be banned, sorry. Shots at or from a moving vehicle are rarely effective. This is directly out of our policy manual. Officers are advised to move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging their firearm at the vehicle or any of its occupants. That is another policy that I can recall being there, if not for my entire 20-year career. It's been there for all of it. The next one is a use of force continuum. Specifically, it says establish a force continuum that restricts the most severe type of force to the most extreme situations and creates clear policy and restrictions on the use of force, or the use of each police weapon and tactic. We're going to cover that in our third presentation tonight. We don't use a use of force continuum. We use a response to resistance policy. The use of force continuum is outdated. It was something that was popular in the 80s and 90s and is no longer applicable to modern-day law enforcement. The next one is require comprehensive reporting. Specifically, it requires officers to report each time they use force or threaten to use force against civilians. Comprehensive reporting includes requiring officers to report whenever they point a firearm at someone in addition to all their types of force. Our policy specifically says, any use of force by a member of this department shall be documented promptly, completely, and accurately in an appropriate report, depending on the nature of the incident. The officer should articulate the factors perceived and why he or she believed the use of force was reasonable under the circumstances. Additionally, all, each use of force is reviewed by the sergeant, the commander, and the assistant chief. And in some situations, depending on the type of force, it's routed all the way to me as the Chief of Police. And then officers have in-car video or body cameras. Every Auburn police vehicle that's equipped for patrol has an in-car video. And then officers who do not operate a patrol vehicle, such as parking, traffic, or motor officers, and the bicycle cops are equipped with body cameras. Detective and admin vehicles don't have any video systems, but each of our detective units have one body camera that they can use under specific circumstances where they think they might be out taking enforcement action or attempting a interview. And then this is a look at our force incidents. As you can see, over the past five years, on average, we use anywhere between 0.21% and point, well roughly between 0.20% and 0.22% of all police contacts each year result in a use of force. And then on average, 3.9% to 4.6% of all arrests result in a use of force. So looking at that, that's relatively low. And then this is another slide with some statistics relating to force used by police. It is rare in the U.S. Annually, there are over 150 million calls for service, self-initiated and other police, public contacts. On average, non-d deadly force is used or threatened in about 1 in 54 police contacts, so about 1.8%. On average, there are about 13 million arrests in the United States, and there's a use of force in 1 in every 110 of those. On average, there's about 1,000 officer-involved shootings, which comes out to 0.0003 contacts. And then on average, there's about 800 arrest-related deaths from non-firearms. So that's 1 in every 2.6 million police contacts. And then on average, teaser is used in every 3,000 contacts. And then you can see the other stats that are related to force that's used in jails. So that concludes the presentation on the eight that can't wait. Do you have any questions?
Questions on this topic, counsel? Chief, I've got just.
Sorry, Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Okay, good, good, Councilmember Sterns, I'll follow up to you.
Oh, you can go first.
Okay, thank you. So Chief, first of all, I, I really like the duty to intervene and how that's presented. A question related to that incident in Minnesota, so the, the senior officer basically told the other officers in that situation who were in some sense trying to intervene that it wasn't necessary. How do our, and I know our policy is that we will intervene, how do we ensure that takes place if there's a senior officer on the site who may be doing something contrary to the policy?
I'm having a hard time picking up the last part of your question. It sounds like you're asking, how do we guarantee if there's a senior officer on scene and they're seeing inappropriate force that they're going to inter, intervene?
If there's a senior officer using the force, how does a junior officer intervene? How do you ensure that?
That is correct, what the Senate Clerk just mentioned, yes.
Yeah, so the, the best I can answer this question is that we train our officers in our code of ethics and our core values and what's expected of them as police officers. And we put professional officers out there on the street. And while I can't guarantee the decision that any human being is going to make at any point in time, I can tell you that we put a, a high level of importance on being professional and integrity and our core values and what's expected of them. And we, there's an understanding that if officers are out there on the street and something inappropriate is occurring or is happening, we are going to do a thorough investigation and find out those results and then hold them accountable. It, I, I would be speculating or, you know, I, I can't sit here and say, oh, that's never going to happen because I can't control what decisions, you know, human beings are going to make under certain conditions. But what I can tell you is we reinforce our, our policies and our core values and our code of ethics. And we have officers that buy into them and believe them. And they're professional. And I can tell you that I believe officers are going to do the right things and make the right decisions while they're out there doing their jobs.
Yeah, great. I greatly appreciate that. So thank you. One, one quick follow-up to the Councilmember Sterns. We've had discussions as a council in the past briefly regarding the use of body cameras. Should we be taking a look at body cameras? Are they actually effective? Do they do what they're intended to do? Is that something we may be looking at, or should we consider for future use?
I think when it comes to body cameras, there's a variety of opinions out there in the industry standard in regards to body cameras. One thing that is unfortunate about a body camera is that it's only one-dimensional. And so it doesn't always give an accurate representation like the media and others would like us to believe. As human beings, we have peripheral vision, and we also make decisions in situations based on our other senses that can't be recorded or detected by a body camera. Aside from that, implementing a body camera program is very expensive. That would be almost to the tune of about $1 million a year. A lot of that cost comes from the extra staff that you would have to get for the public records request and redacting information for those requests and for the courts. I believe that the in-car video cameras that we have now are more than sufficient for what we need them to do. And we are currently looking at our policy. I'm actually waiting for a, a request to update our policy from one of our patrol commanders, Commander Vets, who is suggesting that we expand the use of our current in-car video camera from what our policy requires right now. We may not capture everything on video, but by expanding the use of our in-car video system, we will capture more audio of police interactions, which I think can be just as valuable as video.
I greatly appreciate that. It wasn't recent, but a few years ago, I went on a ride-along with one of the officers and got to witness the in-car video firsthand. And it was very impressive to see how that operates in our vehicles, and I would agree with you wholeheartedly on that. So, Councilmember Sterns, please.
You actually asked the question I was going to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trump, you all have a question?
Councilmember Trump, manual.
On, actually, on the same question as Mr. Corsi just asked, when did we first get our body cameras? How many years did we, has it been that we are, our police officers are wearing those?
So we got our in-car video camera. So we got our in-car video cameras, I believe, in 2003. Sorry, I'm at the point in my career where I use benchmarks to go for time. And I know I got into K-9 in 2005, and we got them a little before that. So I think it was about 2003. And then our bicycle officers and parking control officers and motor officers who have the actual body camera, not a in-car video system, they got those within the last three years, I believe.
2016, I think.
So 2016 timeframe, so I guess four years.
Okay, so the, I kind of remember when counsel voted on doing the add-ons to the police department. But I was kind of curious also, are the car videos turned on when they, our police officers arrive to the scene? Or are they on all the time?
So technically, our in-car camera system records for 24 straight hours. And there have been times where, per policy, the officer wasn't required to activate his in-car camera. But there was an incident that was captured, so we went and had our IT department, who does a fantastic job, by the way, pull the hard drive out of the car, and then they were able to get us video of the incident that occurred. Otherwise, per our policy, officers are required to activate their in-car camera when they're going to do a traffic stop, when they use their lights and sirens to go to a call. Basically, anytime they activate their emergency lights, their camera comes on, and they're required to leave that recording device on until that call is completed. So if they drive to a domestic violence incident, for example, and they need to use their lights and sirens to get there, they have to leave their camera running until they get back in their call car, they completed that call, and they're ready to clear.
Okay, could I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
So those cameras, can they be used, say, when a person files a claim on a police officer, and a police officer did not report whatever that person is claiming? Is that what you guys use for reviewing a complaint? Or do you do, like you said, somebody goes and talks to the victim, and then they also talk to the police officer? Could you explain more to me about that?
Yeah, if a complaint comes in against a police officer on any incident, first thing we do is go and look and see if there's video and pull that video and take a look. That's where we always start to get a, you know, an accurate representation of what may or may not have occurred.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember J. Rogers raised his hand.
Councilmember J. Rogers, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, chief, for the presentation. I do have one question. What is force continuum? What's the difference between that and reasonable officer standard? I don't understand that, especially when you say that it was used in the 80s and 90s.
There's a force continuum and reasonable.
Oh, okay. So if we could, I would like to defer your question to our third presentation. So our third presentation that we're going to do soon as we're done with this Q and A session explains the difference between a use of force continuum and a reasonable officer standard. If that's okay.
Okay, that'd be awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this topic, counsel? Okay, thank you, chief, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn it back over now to Sergeant Frith and Commander Adams, and they're going to discuss use of force continuum versus reasonable officer standard.
Great. Maybe I'll be a little less nervous this time. So we're going to talk about the force continuum and the reasonable officer standard. So basically, the force continuum is a guide that allows officers to conceptualize the amount and the type of force they can use in certain situations. And it's a model, and there's actually different models put out by different law enforcement agencies. And I included, we're going to pack it, a couple of just examples of the models that you might look at. I didn't have one that we used to use in Auburn, but those are pretty good representations of what a force continuum, typical force continuum looks like. So these guides, they're, they are, they're necess, they're good for training tools, but they're not good for a policy. And they became popular in the 80s and 90s, and then they became pop, they became policies. Officer, or agencies just started adopting them as actually a, as a policy. And basically, what they do is they provide the officers with a stepped approach to the type and amount of force they could use. So because police work is not a sport, and we're not, you know, like in a boxing match or a mixed martial arts match, we're actually trying to arrest somebody and overcome their resistance to our lawful orders, the force continuum allows us to use more force than what the violator is using. So an example, if the violator tries to punch me, I'm allowed to kick the violator or actually use a stick to hit the violator. And so the basis of the force continuum is that we always, the police, always use one level of force more than what the violator is using. And then if the violator ups their force, we up our force. And when the violator brings their force down, we bring our force down too, which is, which is what we do anyway. But that's what the continuum, so when you look at them, you'll see these stepped approaches, and it defines what the violator is doing, and it kind of defines what the officer can and can do. And they were basically taught with three levels of force. And level one was what we call control tactics. And so those are our pain compliance tactics. That's what we call our wristy-twisty, so counter joints. Not sure if you can see me or not.
They cannot.
They cannot see me, okay.
They can if you want them to.
No, that's fine. I was just going to kind of demonstrate a little bit, but that's okay. So the counter joints are things where we're manipulating your wrist and elbows, things like that. We grab you by the hair, or we grab you by the arm and take you to the ground, or we use OC pepper spray. Those are considered level one control tactics. And then there was a second level that was called defensive tactics, and those were what we call impact impedance. So those are when we start actually using strikes, kicks, impact weapons, which are batons and things like that. And then we can use the vascular neck restraint and the taser. And then level three are determination tactics, deadly force. And so when we get to where we were at a level three with the violator, you know, that's our firearm. We can use edge weapons, which are knives. I mean, we teach our officers that if they're on the ground and it's deadly force, they can use their pen. We put our fingers through their eyes, eye sockets, anything that we need to do to win, but it's a deadly force situation. And so those are typically the three levels of force that a force continuum taught. Now, there's some, there's some problems with the force continuum, and I'll come back around to that in a second. But what the reasonable officer standard is, is in 1989, there was a case, Graham versus Connor, and it went to the U.S. Supreme Court. And what it had to do with is an officer was watching, happened to be parked or was at a convenience store and saw a car pull up rapidly, and the passenger jumped out of the car and ran into the convenience store and then ran back out real quickly, jumped in the car, and the car sped off. And this led the officer to believe that maybe they did a robbery or they stole something. Basically, there was some kind of criminal activity. What really happened was is the person that jumped out was diabetic and went into the store to get some, I think it was some orange juice or something like that. There was a lot of people in the store. A person didn't want to wait because they were kind of in medical distress, and so they hopped in the car and sped off. So when the officer saw him speed off, the officer stopped the car, contacted Graham. Because Graham was having some diabetic issues, mental conditions, Graham jumped out of the car. There was an altercation. Graham ran around the car a few times, there was a fight. Other officers showed up, and they had to fight Graham to get him under control. And he wound up with some broken bones and whatnot. And I would like to add, if they had a vascular neck restraint, that would not have happened. They would have just been able to take him unconscious. But anyway, while they had Graham handcuffed after this fight, other officers went to the store to find out if the store had been robbed or a crime occurred and found out that they had not, and that Graham was simply diabetic trying to get orange juice. So there was a lawsuit, and this went all the way to the Supreme Court. And what the Supreme Court ruled was that the, this counter was okay based on the Fourth Amendment because it was reasonable for the officer that observed what happened to think that crime had occurred and to stop the car. And then based on the actions of Graham, the officer's actions were reasonable in using force. And so that became the objective reasonableness standard. And so basically, what that is, what that means is, is that an officer with similar training and experience would have done something similar, similar in the same situation. And so that doesn't mean that all officers are going to do the exact same thing. It just means that it's a reasonable, that with my training and experience, what I do would be reasonable for another officer with similar training and experience to do. And so there were some things that they looked at. How do we know what's reasonable? Because what may be reasonable to me may not be reasonable to Commander Adams or Chief Collier or Chief O'Neil. And so they define some ways that we figure out what reasonableness is. And so basically, it's basically based on what the totality, the circumstances are, and it's known by the officer at the time. And it has to be judged from a perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene rather than with 20/20 hindsight. So, you know, it's easy for us to sit here now and maybe say, "That officer should have did this. That officer should have done that. The officer should have considered, you know, that Graham was diabetic." But we have to look at it from the perspective of that officer seeing it happen right then, right there, that moment, and has to make a split-second decision. And is it reasonable for the officer to stop that car and contact Graham to find out if a crime had occurred? And so that's kind of what we look at now. So if I go to a call and a person wants to fight me, you know, I don't have a split second to make a decision and use force on that person. And so, you know, the next day, I can always sit back, and everybody else can sit back and go, "Well, I could have done this, I could have done that." But you have to look at it from the perspective of, "I only had a split second, and I had to make that decision right then and there." Similar to like if somebody were to pull a knife and run at me, you know. There might be a lot of different options I have, but I only have like a split second to make a decision or get stabbed. And so when we look at, when they look at the use of force to determine whether it was reasonable, they have to look at it from the perspective of what that officer knew at that split second that the officer used force. And then some of the reason, and some of the ways they determine that is, number one, we look at the severity of the crime. You know, if I'm going to arrest somebody that just committed a homicide, that's probably going to be a lot different than if I'm arresting somebody who stole something from Safeway, you know, a six-pack of beer. So shoplift is not going to be as severe, obviously, as a homicide. And then there's a whole level of criminal activity in between homicide and shoplift. And so that's one of the first things that's looked at, is the severity of the crime. And then the next thing we look at is whether the suspect poses a threat to the safety of the officers or others. So, you know, if it's a shoplifting suspect and they stole a six-pack of beer, and we go to arrest them, and they haven't made any threats or tried to fight the officer, or they didn't fight the security personnel inside the Safeway, then there's no reason to believe that they're a threat to us or society. And so our level of force to arrest them is going to be less than if, say, they went to steal that six-pack of beer, and they pulled a knife on a security officer and said that they would, they would shoot an officer if we tried to arrest them. You know, that would definitely, even though the crime is a six-pack of beer, their actions have made us now fear for our life or for others. And so that's one of the things they look at. Some other things that are looked at when you're determining reasonableness is the availability of alternative methods to capture the suspect. And that doesn't mean that the officer has to go through like a rolodex of options, like, "I need to do this, I need to do that, I need to do this first." It just means, were there other options available? So that six-pack of beer, you know, say the person runs out of the Safeway and we're chasing them, you know, and I chase them down, and they run across Auburn Way, and they get hit by a car. You know, I might be, they might consider, "Well, did I have other, did I know who this suspect person was? Did I know where they lived? Did I need to chase them down right then and there? Maybe I could have just went to their house and arrested them." And that doesn't mean I'm wrong, it just means it's one of the things they're going to look at when they're determining whether it's reasonable. Some other things that they look at is whether the person's on drugs or alcohol or has any other kind of mental history. And again, that has to be known to the officer at that moment, because we know that drugs and alcohol and sometimes mental, mental issues can make people erratic, violent, and unpredictable. And then some of the things that we look at, proximity of weapons to the suspect. So again, you know, using this example of shoplift, if the, if the person pulled a knife, then when the officer, and it gets, and the person that reported, the victim reports this crime to the police, and they tell us when we're on our way, "Okay, the suspect stole a six-pack of beer, and they pulled a knife." Now we know that this person has a knife, and we know that they've threatened somebody with the knife, and we have to assume that they have the potential to threaten or stab us. And so that would play into our level of force and how we respond. Some other things are the previous history of violence, training, et cetera, of the suspect known by the officer at the time. So again, that's what we know. And an example of that is there's a prolific auto thief in this area, works around Auburn Federal Lake Kent, and he's told one of our detectives, he's told the detective, "Every time you contact me, I'm going to fight you, and I'm going to run from you. I'll never try to kill you, but I'm always going to fight you." And so that's kind of the history. Now that we know that, every time we go to arrest this person, we're aware that they're, he's either going to try to run or fight. And so that's something that is allowed for us, that we are allowed to use as reasonable in our amount of force. And then there's things such as officer and suspect factors, so age, size, relative strength, skill level, injury exhaustion, number of officers versus suspects. So that would be, you know, if an older officer, such as myself, goes up against a 21-year-old bodybuilder, I mean, there's going to be some, there's some factors there that could, you know, I'm probably not going to be able to over, you know, use my strength or my cardiovascular fitness against this person for very long, because they're going to be probably stronger and in better shape than me. Same thing if you got an officer that's, you know, five foot two going up against a suspect that's six foot two and muscular and just got out of prison. There's going to be a little bit of a size difference there. And so those things are kind of taken into consideration. Same thing with number of officers. If there's three of us officers going to contact one shoplifting suspect, then you would think that our level of force, you know, initially, when we go to contact the suspect, is going to, going to probably be less, we're going to be starting at a lower level of force because there's three of us as opposed to one officer contacting this person, you know, in a park at night alone. You know, that officer, when a single officer, they're going to, their threat level is going to be a little higher. And then, of course, the training and experience of the officer, so. And that's, that's a double-edged sword in ways, because a new officer doesn't have training and experience, and they might use force a little faster or a little bit, a higher level of force. And an older or more experienced officer might have been in these situations before and be a little less stressed out about the situation. But on the other hand, the older officer, the more experienced officer, might have been in these situations and recognizes that this suspect is a threat to us, and will use force faster sometimes. So these things aren't cut and dry. These are, these are just factors that the courts are going to look at to determine whether that officer used a reasonable amount of force. And the problem is, is people want cut and dry solutions, and police work is not cut and dry. And so the problem with the force continuum that we run into, one of the problems is, is that the force continuum is not considered by the courts. So if an officer uses force and they're sued, which obviously the city's going to be sued also, when we go to court, the courts are not going to use a force continuum to determine the reasonableness of the officer, they're going to use Graham versus Connor. And so if we use a force continuum as a policy, and that's how we train our officers, it's like going to, you know, it's like having a baseball team that practices that four strikes you're out instead of three strikes. So we practice one set of rules, and then we go play a game, the rules are completely different. Well, we're going to lose, and we're not going to be prepared. And so, and one, so just that alone shows that the force continuum is not, it doesn't make a lot of sense to use a force continuum as a policy when that's not even what the courts are going to use. It's like using, it's just a different rulebook altogether. And so the other thing that the force continuum has some weaknesses is, is it's just cut and dry and what amount of force we can use. And so I've explained it during training, but the other day, I heard the mayor address it, and addressed it in a way that was really simple. But it's basically, if we use a force continuum, what we're saying is, and I can't remember exactly how the mayor said it, but if a 12-year-old child comes at me, I'm, I'm five foot 11, and I'm 215 pounds, and I work out a lot. If a 12-year-old child comes at me with a stick, by the force continuum, I can treat that 12-year-old child the same way I can treat a six-foot-two, 25-year-old man who works out and practices fighting with a stick. And I don't think that any of us would think that's a reasonable, you know, what, the way I would attack a man, a grown man trying to hit me with a stick or stab me or attack me, punch or kick me, the way I would respond to that, definitely, I don't think we would think that's reasonable for me to do the same thing to a 12-year-old child that may be less than five foot, maybe weigh 110 pounds, and not really understand what they're doing. And that's the problem with the continuum, it doesn't take into those totality of circumstances. It just says that if this happens, you're allowed to do this. And so it's just misleading to officers. I feel like I'm forgetting something here. I don't know if anybody wants to jump in. And so another example I used on that is, you know, if an officer encounters an elderly person using a walker or a cane, and the elderly person is angry about the incident, and, you know, strikes the officer in the leg with the walker or the cane. and, you know, strikes the officer in the leg with the walker or the cane, using the force continuum, the officer could pull out a baton and strike that elderly person in the shoulder, the arm, the legs, the hips, somewhere in the torso, not the head, but anywhere in the torso. And you can imagine some of our officers that are, you know, work out and are strong and fit, hitting, you know, an elderly person, let's just say, I'll just say for sake of argument, a 75-year-old person, they may, you know, they could do some significant, significant damage. But the 75-year-old that hit the officer with a cane really isn't going to do much damage to that officer, is maybe leave a mark at most or some transient pain. And that's the problem with the force continuum, it would allow us to pull our stick out and, and literally hit that elderly person a few times until they are in custody. And so under reasonableness, the reasonable officer standard, I don't think any of us would think that was very reasonable, and it would require the officer to do other things, maybe back up, maybe not back up. But, I mean, I could give you a list of reasonable, that's the thing, I can give you a list of reasonable options than an officer could do in that situation, instead of just pulling out their stick and hitting the elderly person. You know, it's like the officer was going up against a six-foot person, 180 pounds, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna use your stick, or maybe you're gonna use a vascular neck restraint or some other form of, some other form of force. And so I'm kind of going to circle back here. So when I talked about the three levels of force, level one, control tactics, level two, defensive tactics, and level three, lethal force, those are defined by a force continuum, but the courts have not defined those as levels of force. So when we teach those, they're still, they're still valid for us to teach, but they're not valid for us to rely on as a policy, because the courts do not define level one, two, and three. And an example is, there's been some cases using, use of the taser, and the, the courts have defined it as an intermediate use of force, but never told us what intermediate means. So we in law enforcement have determined that intermediate is basically the same as level two. But it's just an example of how the courts don't use those terms, and it's just doing us a disservice, it's doing the city, the citizens, and the officers a disservice when we're using a separate rulebook than what the courts are using. I can, I could talk about this on and on and on, so at this point, I'll stop, and then if there's any questions, maybe, maybe we can clarify.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was going to add something that, you know, the, the previous presentation, A Can't Wait, it also covered the use of force continuum. And, I mean, it is important to note that, I mean, there are, it's not like state for, for a number of big cities, New York City still has one, Chicago does, Dallas does, Boston and Los Angeles both signed on to the A Can't Wait Use of Force Continuum this past month. So, you know, but I, I think what they're going for is something that, you know, really just clearly defines what, what forces should be used to specific types of situation. And then secondly, you know, what are the rules for escalation? So I, I think that's, that's where public policy is headed. You know, and, and I mean, there, there may be other changes that, that happen, but certainly at a much higher level than, than where we are, in, in terms of, you know, overturning Graham versus O'Connor, that there's legislation in the House that would do that. But anyway, I just wanted to pass that information on, so, thank you.
Councilmember Malanga has raised her hand.
Councilmember Malanga.
Yes, during the presentation, you mentioned there may be a young officer that's under stress that may use more of a forceful tactic than a more experienced officer. Are there trainings or webinar, some, some things that you guys take to de-stress on a regular basis?
So is there a training or something you do to de-stress on a regular basis?
To de-stress?
You mentioned a young officer might be more apt to use force.
I think officers do a lot of things throughout the course of their career to learn to deal with stress and the anxiety of the job. I think, you know, we learn from our de-escalation training, we learn from our crisis intervention training, and we learn from going through our scenarios. You know, when we go through four sessions of DT each year, there's usually a little bit of a mock scene at the end of each of those sessions, where the DT instructor puts on the uniform, you know, we call it a red man suit, where they're padded, where we can use some force against them, and our instructors aren't going to get hurt, we have the mock scenes at the end of the year. I think building all those things in really makes an officer more comfortable with the hazards of the job and the things that they're dealing with. And then we also encourage our officers to do things outside of work that help them deal with stress and process what they're doing. And, you know, that's where we encourage them to work out, or go hiking, or play golf, or enjoy the hobbies that they have. Those things weren't there 20 years ago when I got hired on. You know, the stress of the job was the stress of the job, and you went home and dealt with it, however. But there's a huge push in law enforcement right now to increase officer wellness and create opportunities for police officers to be healthier, both, both mentally and physically. And it's one of our organizational goals for 2020, is to improve officer wellness and what we're doing to keep officers healthy so that they make better decisions on and off the job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trout Manuel has her hand raised.
Thank you all for your reports. I also have five police officers in my family, and we pray for every one of them to come back home safe. I appreciate all the training that you're doing and continue to do, but my concern is, is back to women, being used excessive force on them. And I have an example of a person locally, that's five-two, 130 pounds, there was a little alcohol involved in it, and she was apprehended by two police officers, and there was excessive force just on her. She ended up, there were some charges on her, and she ended up getting a concussion and a whiplash and bruises all over, on her neck and her chest and her back. So my concern is that, you know, we got to also look at the size of the women and the size of a man. I believe the officers were both six foot some pounds, you know, tall and, and 180 pounds, where she was only 130 pounds. So I hope that our police officers will be more careful and continue to de, compress themselves, you know, in, in their jobs. So I just wanted to say that.
Deputy Mayor, if I might, Councilmember Trout Manuel, I think you probably want to make sure that you use alleged in there, unless this is a case that has already been filed and tried. I think that's an allegation, and you want to be very cautious with that.
Yes, it's, it isn't alleged, it's already happened, but that person still contacted me, according to all of this that's been going on. And so she still lives in our area, still fears our police officer, and I told her she didn't need to fear our police officer. But I just want to say that I'm glad that we're getting, you guys are getting the, the training that you're getting, and continue to do the job that you do.
Councilmember, if you have information that that occurred, I, I would appreciate you, or appreciated if you would report that to myself or Commander Stocker. Obviously, if something like that occurred, we want to investigate it and either get factual information out there, so that there's not inaccurate information being spread around our community that diminishes the trust of our police officers. And then if it is factual information, we want to be able to hold those officers accountable to their actions. So if you could either reach out to me or Commander Stocker, I'd appreciate it.
And to piggyback on that, we discussed the force continuum, and with the force continuum, it does not take male or female size or anything like that into consideration. The current policy we have uses reasonable objective. Like I said previously, I'm five foot nine, about 170 pounds. I work out, I'm in pretty decent shape. If I encounter someone that size, that I, I am much bigger than, which is not often, but if it happens, our reasonable standard gives me different options to use when it comes to force. Under a force continuum, I have the level of force that's presented to me, which may be unreasonable, but if that policy that we have now is taken away, those would be the tools I have at my disposal, whether I like them or not.
Okay, counsel, any further questions for the officers?
I've seen a lot like that.
Okay, I don't hear any. So, gentlemen, Chief O'Neil, Assistant Chief Collier, Commander Adams, and Sergeant Frith, thank you so very much for your presentation this evening. I really, really, I hope on behalf of counsel, want to express our sincere thanks.
Sergeant Frith has one more comment.
I'm sorry?
Sergeant Frith has one more comment.
I'm sorry, go ahead Sergeant.
Thank you, sorry. I would just also like to point out, I know that there's some examples of larger agencies like Boston, I can't remember all the agencies, but the, the larger agencies, let's take Seattle, Los Angeles, Boston, New York, Chicago. I know the tendency in law enforcement is, we tend to think that, because they're larger agencies and have, in bigger cities, that they might be better trained, or they might be agencies that we should follow by example, because we're smaller. But in reality, that's not the truth. Most of the time, those larger agencies are operating on outdated policies, there's so many layers of administration, and there's so many officers that they don't receive nearly the amount of de-escalation training, or use of force training, or even driver training, that the agencies our size, and when I say our size, it'd be Auburn, Kent, Renton, Taquilla, the majority agencies in the United States receive, we receive way more training than they do, and we're able to adapt and change to the demands of, you know, the political demands and innovations in law enforcement, a lot faster than the big, the larger agencies are, sometimes just strictly because of fiscal constraints for the larger agencies. So I, I would just, I would like to just caution against watching what these larger agencies do, and then thinking that that's what we should follow suit. I mean, it's, it's definitely reasonable to see what they do and study why and what's going on, but I just think that's a, that can be a rabbit hole if we try to just follow a big agency, because they're making, they're making their decisions for their, what fits their needs. You know, when they have a thousand officers that they're trying to train in a vascular neck restraint, they're not going to get the, probably not going to get the quality of training and the amount of training that we get at agencies our size. And so I would just, that was just what I would like to add.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I, I raised the city simply because I felt that, you know, I was just simply responding to the sense that, that there was a dismissal of the use of force continuum. And, and I just wanted to point out, show that obviously not everyone agreed. And, and I mentioned specifically Boston and Los Angeles, because they just adopted their A Can't Wait policies this past month. So it, it, and there, you know, as you said, it's reasonable to evaluate and, and look at things. And, and I'm just giving you two examples of cities that, that did. There, there are actually plenty more that, that vary in size, but those were the two that popped into my head. So, thank you for that.
Sergeant, thank you for that explanation, and I think that's an excellent point to make regarding the larger agencies in the, in the nation, and how their work is done, in some cases much differently than ours. I grew up in a community on the East Coast, at that time, it was about 25,000 people. My mother's oldest brother, my uncle, who was in the Bible, was chief of police in that community for 15 years. And growing up with that, see, actually today, many, many years later, how policing has changed so much. And I am just so glad personally to hear and see what we are doing in the Auburn Police Department, not only for the community, but also for our officers. And I know you gentlemen are all looking at our officers as setting the standard on how officers operate, not just in our city, but across our state, and in some cases, across our country. And you're commended for that. I think you do a tremendous job, very stressful situations, even in a town of 80,000 people, not knowing day by day what you're going to encounter, how it's going to be encountered. So I hope I'm speaking on behalf of counsel, but my sincere thanks and gratitude for the work that you do, and how you do it on an everyday basis. And once again, thank you for the presentation tonight, excellent, not just for counsel, but I hope that our watching members of our community will look at this and review the videos as they come out, and really take this into heart as to what you're doing to serve the community of Auburn. So thank you once again for an excellent presentation. Any last thoughts, counsel, before we move on? All right, thank you once again, and we will move on to our next subject, which is new business. Any new business from anybody?
Councilmember Trout Manuel has raised her hand.
Okay, go ahead. I don't want to, let's ask some questions.
Yeah, thank you. Since the fireworks are going to be just right around the corner, and they've already started around up here, Muckleshoot, I've been getting a lot of people calling or coming by the house and asking questions about, about the fireworks. This year, they're the loudest, I have heard the big booms, there have been some huge booms. And so I reached out to Virginia Cross, and I asked her, because we, we received a letter from the mayor that came from Mr. Cottrell, and he mentioned about the Muckleshoot Tribe, Muckleshoot Housing Authority sending out letters to the, their renters up here in Muckleshoot. And I talked to Virginia Cross about it, and she said she wasn't aware of it, but she would look into it. A day later, she called me up and she says, yes, that Mr. Lee from the housing authority said they do send out a letter on reminding them about the fireworks, and about how it's illegal in Auburn to set off those, those fireworks. So that brought, and I talked to our attorney, and so I've asked the attorney to be present to also help explain about the fireworks up here on the reservation, and who is covered and who isn't. So Dan, are you, are you here, Dan?
Yes, I am. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I don't know if you have my video or video screen, but you're probably ahead of the game not to have that, who wants to look at me. But to answer your question, the City of Auburn has a code that restricts and regulates fireworks. However, because part of our, the territory of the city is within the Muckleshoot Indian Reservation, we, we fall into a little bit of a different scheme in terms of the regulations. Certain types of regulations, including land use, businesses, business uses, and those types, you know, building permits, those types, you know, planning and such, they fall outside city regulations if the property, even if it's within the city limits of the city, if the property is owned by the tribe or a, a member of a tribe within the city. So even property located within the corporate limits of the city that also is within the boundaries of the reservation, would, would fall under city regulations so long as it is not owned by or occupied by the tribe or tribal members. That, that may create some confusion, but that's the reason why some areas of the city that are within the reservation would be restricted by city regulations and some not. I, I don't know if that answers all the questions that you have, but that is, that's one of the realities that we, we live with, because part of our property, part of the city's territory is within the reservation.
Correct. And, but what I wanted to know- And, but what I wanted to know is that they give these out also to all the ones that are within the reservation, and it states on there the legal fireworks and the illegal fireworks. So if them themselves are saying, and as Virginia Cross said to me, that we all, you know, we should both be on the same side of this, and I agree, that if we are, if we have an ordinance or a law that says if it goes up and blows up, then we should enforce it. And if we're not enforcing it just because some of us live on the reservation, and some of us aren't up here on the hill, then why do we even have this law?
Well, that's not, and maybe the best exclamation I can give is that the way it developed was that originally, cities had all of the authority that they would have throughout the entire city, even if they were located in or partly within a reservation. But court cases have changed that a little bit in that it's curbed back the authority that would otherwise fall within the, the authority, the power of the city in those certain instances, where the land or the property within the reservation and within the city, same property, is owned or occupied by the tribe or by an Indian member of tribe. That makes it more difficult, but for instance, Councilmember Trump Manuel, because you are within the reservation, as I understand it, but you're also within the city, because you're not, so long as I understand this is correct, so long as you are not a member of an Indian tribe, the rules of the city would apply to you, and they would apply to anybody else similarly situated, and it would not, but it would not apply to property owned by the Indian reservation or by members of an Indian tribe. It makes it difficult, it absolutely does, but these cases have developed over a long, long period of time, and in fact, we've had federal cases that have occurred since I've been affiliated with the City of Auburn, that have further restricted the authority that the city might otherwise have when the property is located within a reservation and a city, and occupied by the tribe or a member of the tribe.
Okay, so, as I remembered, when we did this ordinance, we revised it, I mentioned if we could take pictures of the display and of the person who is launching these illegal fireworks. And I do believe that Chief O'Neill said that those would count. If, the reason why I'm asking this is because we were told by a police officer that they have to witness the launching, they have to witness the fireworks, and that isn't the understanding that I had when we passed this ordinance. I remember that I asked if we took pictures with that, if the police officer couldn't be there at the time, and if we took pictures, that would be sufficient for evidence?
Well, that's two questions, and it may be that we need to separate them out, because our code actually provides for a different type of penalty depending upon what's involved with the violation. It could be an infraction, or it could be a misdemeanor. The police authority varies. But to answer the question generally, and this is, this is general, this isn't specific to one or the other, police or prosecutors can use picture evidence if a matter goes to trial. And the authority of a police officer, it may be that nobody could be arrested, and this is gonna be reasonable too, nobody's gonna be arrested if they're gonna be cited with an infraction, but it may also be that it ends up going to the prosecutor to see if there is a submission basis for filing an infraction or for charging a misdemeanor, depending upon what category it falls in, the violation. But the answer to the question is, can a picture be used as evidence? Yes, it can, but it would need a witness who testifies about that, and that again, would be something that the judge could decide is relevant or not, and that's a different question too. But the answer to your question is, yes, a picture could help, but would it always help in every case? That depends on the case.
Okay. Thank you for clearing a lot up for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest to Councilmember Trump Manuel that, you know, really regardless of jurisdiction, you know, the tribe has a fireworks ordinance too, and so, it's not like it's some kind of lullaby situation. You know, there, you just can't blow stuff up in the street, that's against tribal laws as well, so, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any other new business, counsel? Okay, hearing none, thank you all for your participation tonight, and Dan, thank you for your explanation on the fireworks issue. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.